Yeah, they're trying to aim towards blood worship and burials.
I like that. Can you please report on that?
Yes.
When I'm done with my verbal report?
Okay.
Thank you.
Let me text her, let me text her again.
Meeting to order. Welcome everyone to the City of West Miami Regular City Commission Meeting. Tonight is Wednesday, August 4th. It is 7:30 PM. And for the invocation, if we can all rise, Mr. Attorney.
Almighty God, Heavenly Father, bless America. We make our earnest prayer that you will keep the United States in your holy protection in this time of turbulence and unrest. Father of time, and thou hast with the commitment to be faithful to the legacy of our founding fathers and the Constitution of the United States. Deliver us, O Lord, from tribalism and fractalism that tears our nation apart. Grant us, Father, the understanding that divided we fall. Grant us, Father, the understanding that our national motto, "E Plubus Unum," out of many one, makes us strong and free. We're gathered here today to do public service. Grant those public servants the wisdom to dispense their civic duties with the virtues of fairness, cooperation, and justice. Protect, O Lord, the members of our armed forces and keep them out of harm's way. Bless our firefighters and emergency personnel and the medical heroes that have worked so hard in this pandemic time. And lastly, Lord, protect us from any further peril from this pandemic that afflicts us worldwide. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Vice Mayor, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Madam Clerk, Rockhold?
Yes, Rockhold, Mayor Ronda Rodriguez.
Present.
Vice Mayor Eric Diaz-Padron.
Here.
Commissioner Candida Blanca is excused this evening, Madam Mayor. Commissioner Juan Blanes.
First.
Commissioner Luciana Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for July 21st, 2021 Regular Commission Meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Are all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item five, public comments.
Has anyone signed up for public comment?
Not as of this time, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next item.
Item six, report of the city manager.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Commission. As you know, I was away for a couple of days. I have a verbal report that I'd like to enter into the record. The first order of, the first item on my report is the City of West Miami is now entering the phase where we have to go out for bid for catering services for the community center. Mr. Villalobos has reviewed the request for proposals for legal sufficiency, and he has deemed the document with some very minor changes sufficient. The document is now in the hands of Alliance for Aging so that they can give us the green light to go out to bid. We hope to have a bidder sometime before the last meeting in September for catering services. I do anticipate that because of the pandemic and the rising cost of food, that we will probably see some bids a little bit higher than what we're used to seeing with the current contract that we have right now. But we are going to be sending this request, this invitation to bid to all the registered caterers in Miami-Dade County that we have access to. So we'll keep you informed as to the process. I'll work with the city clerk on the announcement of the bid and with Evelyn Paz, the director, and we will bring you the tabulation along with the recommendation. And as per the contract with the Alliance, we have to bring in the Dr. Martinez, who's the licensed dietitian, who has to perform catering inspections and do her due diligence in terms of the bid process. So this is coming up now in the next week or so for the publication effort.
Thank you.
That concludes the first report. The second report is, there are some pending items with, left with FEMA from Hurricane Irma that Mr. Pena, Mercedes, and I have to work on, and with Cory Taylor, who's a representative for FEMA, on some closeouts of some of our project worksheets. So we will be doing this, we'll try to complete this effort by the end of this week, but no later than mid-August so that hopefully we can put this one to rest once and for all. I do suspect that, suspect that there'll be audits in the future. I don't know if in the near future or further down the road, as we have submitted ourselves in the past for auditing purposes.
But Manager, this is just paperwork, right? Because we've received all our money.
We received all the money, but there are some, some questions regarding one particular item that dealt with non-coverage by insurance. And so that has to be closed out. And that deals with the recreation center project. And then we have to go back on some paperwork and get some actual, not quarterly submit, not quarterly reporting, but we have to actually look for the completion dates for each individual project. Okay? So it's tedious work.
Okay.
Nonetheless, we do have some aggressive timelines that we have to meet.
Okay.
So we'll be working with Mercedes and Juan. I'll be working in the coming, upcoming 10 days to try to complete this project as well. The next item is, I met with Mr. Alonso on the potable water, Phase 2 of the potable water system, and there is a checklist of items that we have to prepare so that the EP can prepare an amendment to the first contract because they're going to treat the $350,000 allocation as an amended to, an amendment to the contract, not a separate contract. So Frank Alonso and I and Juan Pena are working together to, oh, there you are. I thought you were back here, working together to achieve the target date so that we can get started on Phase 2 as quickly as possible. The next item in my report is also, I'd like to enter into the record that we received an email that a petition was filed by what appears to be a large number of the Public Services Department as they seek to become, to have a union represent them. So I have a representation certificate, certification petition advising us that they're going to start the process of unionizing. Of course, this petition is submitted to PERC. PERC is the Public Relation, the Public Employee Relations Commission out of Tallahassee. They will likely give them the green light to take it to the next step. So I will periodically update you as necessary on this petition. And last but not least, there is a recommendation from the Director of Planning and Zoning on a previously approved special use permit for planned development for the development of a two-story home at 1090 Silvania Boulevard. The, this permit was approved about 18 months ago, Mr. Pena, more or less, and it's a permit for a home that is now, that lot was purchased by what I understand to be a city resident who wants to develop it with some minor changes to the property. But as a whole, in concept, we wanted to bring it to you to let you know that they're, they have redesigned the project as it was previously approved. So if you want to hear a little bit more about the redesign, Mr. Pena has the memo and a, some exhibits for you to look at. We felt it would not be necessary to put him through a special use permit for planned development, again, since this had been approved. And I think what he's doing is he's utilizing the space in a different way. That's all.
I'm a little concerned why this is coming under a manager report and not as a separate agenda item.
Because it was submitted to us on July 30th. I was out of town, and I had briefly spoken to Mr. Pena about this last week, and we had decided that it would be our recommendation that it would not require a special use permit for planned development. So when I came back to the office this morning, I found the memo that Juan issued on July 30th on my desk.
Mr. Attorney?
Yes, that is totally correct, Madam Mayor.
This is proper procedure?
There's no issue as far as Mr. Pena presenting the recommendation today.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Pena, go ahead, sir.
How about having the applicant here, present?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Mr. Yanez wanted to be here, but he's an architect by trade, and he's away on a project, so he could not make it tonight.
Well, maybe we should postpone it to where he can be in town and be present.
That's, that's your, that's your priority.
Whatever you, whatever you wishes.
Is it, is it just modification, is it just a two-story home?
Yes.
And it's just modifications to the two-story, to, what is it, changing where the windows are?
Basically, you approved a four-bedroom, four-bath, if I'm not incorrect, and he's reducing it to a two-bedroom, three-bath.
But he changed?
No, three bedrooms. He, he modified it to reflect three bedrooms.
Three bedrooms.
Rather than four.
Four.
Well, did it change ownership?
Yes.
Okay, then, you know what? I think it needs to be here. I think, you know, we might not put him through the whole gamut of getting a special use permit, but he needs to present himself here and, and do what you're doing.
Excuse me. Just so you understand what your code says. Your code doesn't require that. Your code requires that upon him advising me, I advise the manager, and the manager has to advise the board commission of a slight change in the plan. It doesn't require him to be here present. If you want him present, he has no objection with coming at the next meeting. I spoke to him this evening.
I mean, personally, and this is just my, my opinion, I don't, I mean, this is just, I typically don't have a problem usually with, you know, two-story home construction, and the fact that they have to go through a different process, I think is, is even a little outdated. So I don't, I don't have a problem if it's not a significant, I mean, change. It's a two-story home, that's all it is, right?
Two-story home, the angle of the building stays the same as proposed originally, it's just the outside is going to be more modern and the layout inside is different.
And no other new construction. If it was a one-story home, we'd need to come to the commission, right?
No.
I mean, yeah.
So only, we're only changing the inside of the home?
The layout of the home.
Completely inside, nothing, nothing will be visual from the outside of the changes?
Yes. The outside is not going to be the gable roof that was proposed originally. It's going to be a more modern home. It'd probably have a more square look.
So, so, Mr. Attorney. We issued a special use permit to a property owner. And this property owner, you know, presented plans, and the plans were approved, asked for those plans. So he sells the property to someone else, like this gentleman architect that Mr. Pena is mentioning. Is it lawful for us to do what we're going to do?
Mr. Commissioner, the issue is this.
It changed, it changed ownership.
I'm sorry.
It changed ownership. It's not, in other words, it changed hands. The land changed hands. It's not the same person that, that originally applied for the special use permit. And I'm not trying to be difficult, you know, I, I, I feel the same as the Vice Mayor, you know, I want a second story built here in West Miami, but, I mean, I don't know, it just doesn't seem like, you know.
I'd be happy to respond.
Okay.
See, you approved project, you don't approve persons. The fact that the project, the property changed hands does not mean that the project that you approved has to come back to the commission again. Now, if there are substantial changes, I should say for the record that I just learned about this issue just as it was presented, because it didn't come to me before. But as I say, if there's the same thing strictly what, inside of the home or so on and so forth, I have not seen the plan, so I cannot tell you. But changes of the person does not mean that you have to approve the project.
I understand the commission is concerned.
One at a time, gentlemen, one at a time.
No, no, I just, can you, if you have their, can you, I know you mentioned the roof, can you briefly just go over all the changes that were, that were made? That way we can, we can determine whether it's significant or not and?
Well, again, it's not just that. It's the fact that it changed ownership, that's my.
That's not, that's not a concern for me because like the, I mean, personally, because the, my attorney said, when we approve these projects, we don't approve the individual, we approve the land, and we kind of have to separate that in our heads.
Okay.
So that, that part for me is not, is not an issue, but I, you know, the attorney hasn't looked at it, and at the end of the day, it is sort of, everything falls back on the body, whether it's substantial or not. But we have a recommendation, but can you, if you can briefly go through, go through it so we can make that determination of it's substantial and whether this man has to come over here or not?
Okay. Again, basically, the, the property used to be, was proposed as a four-bedroom, four-bath. It's been reduced to a three-bedroom. I believe it's three-bath, if I'm not mistaken. And it still has a two-car garage. It's, bedrooms are on the second floor, downstairs, the mezzanine that was, the bedroom that was over the living room has been removed, so the mezzanine, the downstairs living room is a two-story height. The alignment of the, of the front door with the doors leading out to the pool area are all glass, so you'll be able to see through the house, and you'll be able to see the pool. That's basically it on the inside. The exterior, it's gotten from the gable parts that were being placed on the building have been squared up because he likes modern architecture, so that's what he's doing. And the angles, the balconies, they all stay the same. It's not within your prerogative to approve or disapprove, it's within the prerogative of the manager to give you a notice that it has changed. The ordinance is very clear as to who has the authority, and it's the manager.
So why are you bringing it to us, then?
Because the manager is required to mention it to the?
To report.
To the City Commission as a report.
So this is just a report, we have no say-so.
Yes, that's why I made it a part of my, my report, Madam Mayor.
So why are we talking about it?
Well, you know, I was, I was under the impression that anytime, you know, property changed ownership, you know?
No.
Okay, I stand, I stand corrected.
Once you, once you approve a special use permit, it goes with the land.
With the land, okay, all right.
It does not go with the owner.
Let's, let's be a little bit clear upfront next time, because we shouldn't even have had this ten-minute discussion, if it wasn't up for discussion.
It is to inform you of the changes, it's not to debate whether he can or can't.
And to everybody's benefit, you know, it doesn't really happen that often, and so we bring it back to you, and obviously it raises questions because these special use permits rarely, after they're approved, they come back to you with, with changes. I think, I think that the new redesign one is actually five square feet less
Less than what you've.
Than the other one, so
I have a question.
There are no more.
We don't, we can't have questions, this is just a report, we have no say-so.
Just?
You can ask away, but this is just a report.
Did you get a chance to see it? To review it?
Again, it doesn't go to Mr. Alonso until it's turned a building.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is just a report, we have no say-so. I mean, you can ask your question.
I have a question.
Go right, go right ahead, sir.
Now, basically, these changes are reducing inside, you know, expanding.
No.
It's just, instead of four-bedroom, it's three-bedroom.
No.
And they maybe make a bigger bathroom or so, so.
Exact.
It's not expanding, it's just interiorized. And of course, we'll be complying with all the requirements inside interior for, by the apartment. I make a motion.
We don't need a motion, this was just a report.
All right.
Next item, please.
All right. Sorry.
Are you done with your report, Madam Manager?
Yes, ma'am, I am, and if you have any, oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to, if you would yield to Mayor, Major Delgado, he has an announcement that he would like to make, and I asked him to please bring it up tonight as a courtesy as part of my report. Absolutely.
Thank you, Manager. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. The One Blood is that company where they have this, this mobile bus that goes around and takes blood donations. They are in contact with our NRO, Officer Alvarez, and they would like to bring that bus here on the 30th between 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM and park it outside here. So just wanted to let you guys know, if there's any objections to that, we can park it somewhere else. But I think it would be good because there's a lot of folks that come in to process their passports, so because we have a lot of movement in City Hall, I think it'd be a good, good thing for them.
That's wonderful, I don't have a problem with that. Does anybody else have a problem with that? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thanks for taking care of that.
Thank you, Major.
Next, is that it, Madam Manager, for your report?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay, next item?
Thank you.
Item seven, report of the city attorney.
There's no report by the city attorney.
Item eight, report of the city engineer.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. My only report today regarding the ongoing water project, I know I have stood up here now a few times talking about the restoration and when that's going to start. Fortunately, Mother Nature has not cooperated, and we've had to continue to postpone that. So as of right now, we're looking at next week at them starting, and hopefully we'll be done soon. But again, as I stated before, major work has been completed, and we're really just trying to get the final restoration done and get a couple of days of no rain. That's really our only ongoing project. As the manager mentioned, we are working on the next phase of the water, potable water project, so I'm working with her office to complete all the forms and all the, you know, the administrative stuff we have to get in place to, for the grant to come through. So we're working on that as well as a few other grants with the office. Other than that, I would just like to report today, this was my first week as a small business owner, so it's been a fun week, and I look forward to continuing to work with the city. That's all I have at this point.
You're on the agenda tonight, too.
I am, thank you.
Thank you, Frankie. Next item, Annika?
Item nine, committee reports.
Are there any reports? I do not have a report this evening either, Madam Clerk.
Any other committee? No reports? Item 10, unfinished business. Item 10, a status report by the Office of the Chief of Police in reference to parking surrounding the buildings along the commercial corridor citations issued, crime stats for each building, and report of interactions by, by the NRO, by Chief Avila.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and Madam Manager. I believe the report was sent to all of you, I don't know if you guys were able to see it.
We have it.
So as far 67th Avenue is concerned, both of these buildings, you see the, the numbers for the three months in the second quarter. The 2201 building had a little bit more visits from the police department. They continue to be for mistaken calls. Most of them are disturbances that when the officers get there, they shouldn't have called the police to begin with. It should have been something taken care of by management. So, and most of those calls are not there for very long. This is not a police issue, it's not a police matter. Contact your manager's office, you know, that kind of situation. The rest of the buildings, the second quarter, the 6320 building, which is the larger building on 8th Street, had a lot of calls for, for service. Some of the disturbance calls involve the parking on 9th Street. Some of the officers will take a signal because it's creating a problem with the parking, and then they'll use the signals as a disturbance signal and go inside and knock on the door, talk to the people if the tag comes back to an apartment, get them to move the car, things of that nature. In that building alone, in, since January, 409 parking citations up until the, up until June 30th, we had had 409 citations written in the area. So the officers are, are taking care of the people there by either getting them to move or writing them up. As far as citations are concerned, 409 have been, had been written until 30th. The other, I have the NRO here, in case anybody has any questions. He's been meeting with the management at all the buildings. The building on 57th Avenue, as you can, as you saw, only had five calls in three months, so that's, that's less than normal, if you will, for a building that size. But very few minor incidences at that building. The NRO has been going to the meetings, meeting with the management, meeting with the concerned citizens that are the ones that, that constantly call at some of these buildings. And, you know, he tries to do whatever he can to try to mitigate the issues that are going on at these buildings. Sometimes he's successful, sometimes he's not because people just don't listen. But the, the second quarter was not a bad quarter as, from our, from our standpoint. We recently had, last week, we had some issues going on with some vehicles. Well, let me, let me go back for a second. We were able to discover in reference to one of the complaints that was going on in reference to one of the citizens that is living in one of the apartments that apparently was conducting business out of the apartments by renting vehicles. At first, we thought that they were selling vehicles. The NRO, along with our detective, were able to investigate further, investigate and continue to talk to people and stuff like that, and they were able to discover that they were actually renting vehicles. They have about nine vehicles between two people that are living in the apartment, and they actually rent through Toro?
Toro.com.
Through Toro.com, they're actually renting the cars. The building didn't know what was going on, but it dawned on them as they were being talked to by the NRO that they were actually making copies of these contracts for the rental vehicles in the office without realizing what they were doing. So it all came together. Public Works and the Code Enforcement was notified, and they've been fined. Hopefully, they will, the building will do what they got to do and get rid of the problem for us. Fast forward a couple of weeks to last week, and apparently they were having a field day with the rental cars out there screeching tires and doing all kinds of things, drag racing, making noise and all that. It just so happens that when the call came in through the police department, our officers were in the area, and they were able to catch, make an arrest, and tow the vehicle. So up until now, we've done what we can over there on 67th Avenue. The numbers have gone down in the, in the second quarter, if you will, but there's still some issues going on. And the guys continue to do what they got to do.
Hey, Chief, thank you for that. The, um, the
The, um, the citations on 9th Street, is it possible, or, and is it, is it too much work to get to, um, across the board, across the 409 citations, to determine what percentage of them are from the building? And what percentage are not, by address?
They're all, they're all from the building.
They're all from the building?
Every single one of them.
No, 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 I, I mean, I mean, like, registered to, to the apartment.
Some are registered from the building, some are people that go there to visit.
Right, I, I, I think that, that, that's what I'm pinning on, I'm, I'm, it, it could be helpful in terms of.
It would be 409 tags that I would have to run.
So, it, it's, it's not, okay, because, because you don't have the, I mean, I'm saying from the citations, that you've already issued.
Well, I mean, the, we've never written that 63rd Avenue, 9th Street, ever, ever, in the history of this department, 409 tickets in six months.
No, no, I, I, I guess what, what I'm, what I'm pinning on is, are they guests of the building, of people in the building? Or are they residents of people in the building? Because that's what we're getting back from the building, right? They're, they're saying that the people just don't want to pay for parking. And I, I very much believe that it's guests.
We may, they, it may very well be, it may be somebody that's living in the apartment that doesn't have a parking inside, an extra person that has an extra car, we don't know that. We know that if they're parked illegally, we hit them.
Right.
And, and it's worked, I mean, it's, it's, you know, the, the, the amount of tickets that, that have to be written are going down because I go by there.
Right, so, i- i- it would be, it would be difficult to, to get from.
I wouldn't be able to justify running 409 tags to find out where they live, or where they're registered to.
Right, because you don't, you don't, where the ticket goes isn't, isn't where it's registered?
Right.
Where, where the ticket, where the ticket is mailed to isn't where the car is registered?
We don't mail those tickets, we put them on the window.
Oh, you put them on the, it doesn't, it isn't.
No, no, you don't, we don't talk to these people, these are parking tickets.
Understand, I, okay. Right, because it only goes to collections, again, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you, Officer Alvarez, this is a very impressive report you put together here. You are, you are definitely on the job, um, very, very impressive. Thank you for, for an outstanding job as our NRO. You're covering just about everything in this report.
Thank you.
From businesses to social media posts, to the community meetings, to Publix, to everything, you're, you're all over the place.
All over the place.
Excellent, thank you, do you have anything to add?
I know, and thank you for the, the One Blood drive that I'm trying to put together, thank you for the opportunity, and we'll see if we can continue doing that.
Are the, the businesses and the residents receptive to, to?
Yes.
The NRO program?
Yeah, yeah, yes, they are very receptive, uh, we're actually gaining more trespass affidavits, so, we're putting up signs on a lot of the businesses. I'm gonna try to work with, uh, Code Enforcement to get ahold of the owner of the actual plaza, so I can do, you know, large, large pieces. From there on out, we have other things to do.
So, the program is going well, and it's positive for, for commercial area, residential area? And again, this is, this is a very impressive report, so, thank you, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you very much, my friend.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Well done, Joe.
Um, Madam Clerk, next item?
Item 10B, Appointment of Members and Alternate Members to the Charter Review Board.
Okay? Let's, uh, let's give our, our, our appointments, um, Commissioner Suarez, would you like to go first?
I already nominated Mrs. Chavez for the Charter Review Board.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Blanes, I'm sorry.
I'd like to nominate Ivan Chavez Jr., and as an alternate, Martin Torres.
Very good, thank you.
I'd nominate Narumilian, and as an alternate, I will be giving it, uh, after, because it hasn't confirmed yet.
Oh, you just brought up a question I was gonna ask. Can we nominate someone that's on a board already? Because I, I, I had, I was thinking of someone, but I didn't ask if they can be on two boards simultaneously, is that, is that possible?
In, in the past, it's been, like, for example, Joe Potts, on our last charter review.
Mr. Attorney, can we do that? Because I, I was thinking of doing it, but I kind of didn't, I forgot to ask ahead of time, so.
I checked with the Office of the Attorney General, and I was not able to find anything that would object, uh, to have a member of the, is it zoning board?
Well, my question is, can, can you, can, can a resident be on two, on two boards at the same time?
Well, at this point.
Regardless of the board.
At this point, I did call the Attorney General's office, and I would not advise it was anything to the contrary. So, if there is anything in the future that, uh, I can find out, I will let you know.
Oh, excellent, okay, thank you.
Well, one, one is a permanent, and the other one is not.
Right, right, I, I, I just had that question, I, I never.
It's a matter, it's a matter of whether or not a, an individual is considered an officer. So, uh, that would be the triggering factor, so, uh, so I said, I did my due diligence, and I did call the Attorney General.
Right, and we're, we're also officers, so I think in this case, it would be.
Well, you answered a question that I was going to ask, and, and the Vice Mayor, um, the Vice prompted me to remember that. Okay, wonderful, uh, my nomination is Ivan Chavez.
As I said, if I find anything to the contrary, I will advise the, uh, Commission.
Wonderful, thank you, sir. Uh, my nomination is Ivan Chavez Senior, and my alternate, um, advised me at the very last moment that, um, they had changed their mind, so I will have to email the clerk with my alternate, I do not have one this evening.
Okay, Madam Mayor.
That's a ministerial issue, Madam Mayor, so you can advise the, uh, Manager at any point.
Sure, exactly, and that's what I'll do. It's just I had one, and it was a change of heart and mind, so I will have to.
Yes, and Madam Mayor, uh, this afternoon, we received a message from Commissioner Blanca in regards to her nomination to the Charter Review Board, and, uh, because of the conversation she had with the City Manager and City Attorney, so, she sent a message which I yield to the City Manager to read it from Commissioner Blanca.
Okay, thank you, Madam Manager?
I have an email dated August 4th at 5:57 PM from Commissioner Blanca that says, "As you know, I will not be able to attend this meeting. As discussed moments ago with you and the City Attorney, I wanted to nominate Eduardo Muina as my appointment to the Charter Review Board. I already spoke to Mr. Muina, and he agrees to serve. I want to put this into the record tonight."
Thank you.
Boy, you can't get enough of that one.
We need a substitute.
Uh, this is the, her nomination, she did mention the alternate, I guess she'll bring another name at the next meeting.
Now, just let her know to email the clerk with her, with her alternate.
Which are choices of, uh, alternate members, and I don't know if at this point, mm, Mr. Attorney, if they, I mean, having an appointee already each member, if they can set a tentative date to, uh, for the first meeting of the Charter Review Board.
I'm sorry?
Yes, I think we should.
An organizational meeting?
At this point, yes, we can schedule a tentative, uh, set a tentative date for the first meeting for the Charter Review Board.
Okay.
Yes, I agree.
Yes, and for your information, August 18th meeting is canceled, usually, we've done it in the past, like, on the same day of the Commission meeting, at 6 o'clock, customarily, we've done the Charter Review Board meetings. So, August 18th is canceled, the next meeting will be September 1st, then September 15th.
Let's go with September 1st, then, is everyone in agreement to have our first Charter Review meeting on September 1st at 6:00 PM? Is there anyone opposed to that? Okay, our first Charter Review meeting will be September 1st at 6:00 PM, to be followed by our regular City Commission meeting at 7:30. And you will notify all of our nominees of the first meeting, correct?
Yes, and I'll need, uh, the information from the Commissioners, but I'll, we'll get to that.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, we'll send them letters as we do with other board nominations, so that they are made aware as to who nominated them, and when they're expected to, to be here, followed by the agenda published by the Clerk's office.
Okay, very good. Thank you, um, when you're ready, Madam Clerk, we can go on to the next item.
Yes, uh, Item 11, Under the Business Agenda Items, we have two presentations. One, a recognition to Angel Rivera on his retirement from the City of West Miami after 24 years of service. And we have a recognition of Manuel Velo on his retirement from the City of West Miami after 13 years of service. I had, uh, I, uh, Angel Rivera had confirmed his attendance, but, uh, he's not here. And, uh, Manuel Velo, uh, he's, he has to be excused, and the, the recognition, uh, if you allow so, uh, can, I mean, I recommend to be, um, presented to the, to the Police Department on his behalf.
Okay.
And, and about Mr. Rivera, I don't know how, Mr. Penner, how, would you like to proceed?
Would you like to accept on his behalf?
Uh, since he confirmed for tonight, and he was unable to come, something must have happened, so I would just leave it for a following meeting.
Okay, that, that sounds good. So, let's, let's, um, defer Angel Rivera's recognition to the next meeting, and let's, uh, have the Chief or PD, someone from the PD, accept the recognition for, for Manny Velo on his retirement. So, are we read that into the record for him? Alright, so, this is presented to Officer Manuel Velo, City of West Miami Police Department, it would help if I got the microphone, right? Presented to Officer Manuel Velo, City of West Miami Police Department, in recognition for your contributions to the City of West Miami, with 13 years of service to the West Miami Police Department, and for your loyalty, commitment, and dedication by promoting excellence in law enforcement, public service, and improving the quality of life of the City of West Miami and its citizenry. Wishing you a well-deserved retirement. With all our gratitude, dated this 4th day of August, Rhonda Rodriguez, Mayor, Rodriguez Padron, Vice Mayor, Juan Bonas, Commissioner, Daniel Blanca, Commissioner, and Luciano Suarez, Commissioner. And accepting on Officer Velo's behalf will be our Lieutenant Valencia.
We'll have, we'll have Quintana edit the picture. And put Manny in there. Yes. There you go. Can we put him on a speakerphone?
Okay, so, next item, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Item 11C, this is a request for mitigation of liens for code and court violations at the property located at 1300 Southwest 58th Avenue, and owner Gladys Mayo.
Mr. Penner?
City and Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Um, as of this afternoon where I visited the property, the property is still not completely cleared, so I would recommend that any mitigation be withheld until the property is in complete compliance.
Okay.
That's correct.
Yes, sir, your mic is not on, sir?
I'm sorry?
Uh, Commissioner Blanes, your mic?
I'm sorry, are these pictures from today?
Yes. Taken by me.
Gladys, what's going on? What's up? Bring.
No habla inglés. Me puede hablar en español, o traducir?
Por qué está la casa sin esa condición?
En estos momentos estoy tratando de sacar las cosas que no necesito para botarlas en estos momentos.
Esto es desastroso. Esto da pena.
Hay unas bicicletas, hay una, un microwave, instala máquina de chapear, solamente.
Pero cuánto tiempo ha estado así?
Bueno, me puedes hacer la foto, a ver te cuándo es.
This is today.
Mr. Attorney, if I may, uh, our Director of Public Services is recommending that we defer this. So, should we not even be discussing this at this time?
I believe that it's up to the Commission to determine, uh, to accept the recommendation of the, one at a time, please, excuse me.
Okay.
Madam? Señora?
Señora.
Um, 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 um.
Uh, Madam, Madam Manager, if.
It has been, uh, the request of the, uh, Mr. Penner to defer this item at some point, so, uh, it's up to the Commission to do that.
Before, before we continue any discussion, we need to decide. So, we're going to take the recommendation of, of Mr. Penner, and we're gonna defer this?
I just.
And, but I don't want, I don't want to get into a discussion if we're going to defer it, you know, it's probably in our best interest to.
Well.
We'll defer that.
Okay, so.
Well, I, I, can, I'm sorry, I might interrupt you, can, can we just get a brief history on it before we decide to defer or not? Uh, just present, present it like you would? I don't know, how long has it been going on?
But, the, the, public, Mr. Penner already recommended that this be deferred. So, I'm, I'm concerned that we continue any type of discussion if we're going to defer it, because it'll have to come back to us.
Well, I, I, I would like to see if I want to vote to defer, and I just, I'm just curious, how long has this been going on? Can you, when was it, when was the citation, per citation issued, that's all I need to know.
It's several citations, it's over two years.
Okay.
Okay, any, any other question for Mr. Penner?
I have a question for you, you requesting defer?
I do request defer until the complete property is in compliance, yes.
You have a reason for that, I mean?
Yes, the pictures you see in front of you.
I, I see. But I ask you, you requesting the defer?
Yes.
Okay, I agree with you.
Okay, all in favor of deferring this, um, to the next meeting?
Aye.
Aye. Is anyone opposed? Madam Manager, please, please translate for Miss Mayo, what's, what's going on?
Señora Mayo, la comisión ha decidido por la mayor, por su voto unánime de dejar este tema hasta un futuro que usted puede, que haya cumplido con todas las regulaciones de dejar esta propiedad limpia de todos los artículos que están por todo el patio y que cumpla con las violaciones que se le dieron.
Futuro próximo.
En un futuro próximo para darle una oportunidad razonable a usted a llegar a poder completar su, su limpieza.
Muy bien, muchas gracias.
Well, it's been two years.
I know.
So, so, I mean, I think she needs to be impressed upon that she needs to, to clean that property.
Um, que, que, if I may, Madam Mayor, may I ask a question before she leaves, so that, um, because of the comment that just, um, Commissioner Blanes just made?
We already deferred the item.
Deferred the item, thank you, okay. Gracias, señora Mayo, gracias por estar aquí con nosotros. Okay.
Next item, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Item, uh, C is deferred, Item D is deferred. Item 11E, Acknowledgement of Response Letter from TY Lin International in reference to termination of engineering services to the City of West Miami effective July 30th, 2021, by City Manager.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk, Madam Mayor, and members of the City Commission. I went ahead and asked the City Clerk to, um, provide you with the acknowledgement of the response provided, uh, to us by TY Lin International regarding the termination letter that was sent to their office, um, within the time stipulated by this commission regarding the termination of their service. They responded to the fact that as of July 30th, they were not in a position to continue serving our account. So, uh, that's pretty much it, if you have any questions regarding that email, we'll be happy to respond.
Any questions for the Manager?
No, I don't have any question. We already talked about it.
Next item, Madam Clerk?
We did offer, Madam Mayor, we did offer 30 days, but they responded, uh, the following day, stating that they, uh, would not be available within the time that, uh, we had offered them to stay with us.
Next item, thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Yes, Item F, Recommendation to Award AMI Professional Services for Engineering Services to Commence August 1st, 2021, through April 20th, 2022, with an option to renew for additional two years. two years pending ratification of the City Engineer by City Manager.
Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Commissioners, um, as you know, this office recommends, and I think I speak for our, um, Director of Planning and Zoning as well, uh, we recommend AMI Professional Services, uh, to serve as our City Engineer moving forward for a, a period that would have commenced August 1st, 2021 through April 20th, 2020 time, at which time the position of City Engineer is ratified pursuant to our charter. And that will allow us the opportunity, or allow the commission an opportunity to renew that contract for, or, or authorize our office to renew the contract for additional two years, again pending ratification by the Mayor and City Commission elected after April. So, um, it is without hesitation, and, um, that, that I recommend AMI Engineering Services. And for many reasons that has been stated here at the previous meeting, his knowledge of the city, the continuity of the projects, his, uh, service as building official to the city, his availability, um, you know, he, he's part of the West Miami family in a nutshell, so that you have my recommendation.
Mr. Attorney, this recommendation meets with your approval, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any questions for the manager?
No, just keep the resolution.
Motion.
Next item, read the resolution, please.
Item 11G, resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami acknowledging correspondence by TY Lin International dated July 22nd, 2021, attached as Exhibit A, stating that TY Lin will not longer be able to provide services to the City of West Miami as of July 30th, 2021 at 5:30 PM, as a result of a termination letter by the City Manager dated July 22nd, 2021, attached, uh, attached as Exhibit B. Waiving competitive bidding entering to, entering into a professional services agreement with MI, AMI Engineering commencing July 31st, 2021 as better described in the attached service agreement attached as Exhibit C, providing for an effective date.
Second, Mr. Blanes, motion.
Motion by Commissioner Blanes, second by Commissioner Suarez.
Hold the bill, please.
Okay, Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diaz-Padron?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
4-0, item passes.
Just as a matter of reference...
Welcome aboard, Mr. Alonso.
As a matter of reference, his fees have been entertained in the preliminary budget, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
No speech, I'm not a speech guy, but thank you very much, guys, and, uh...
You're very welcome, sir.
You will not, uh, you will not regret it. Thank you.
And we, we know we won't.
Thank you.
You may regret it.
Listen, listen, let's just say we know what you're capable of.
Yeah.
So don't slack off now that, you know, that you're working for yourself.
I, I, I told the manager last week that this past Monday, you guys are all mine, so, or I'm all yours, yes, the other way.
Both, that works both ways. That works both ways.
So, I'm at your disposal, thank you.
Congratulations, Frank.
I have a comment for Mr. Alonso.
Go ahead.
Mr. Alonso, you know why, you deserve it.
I appreciate that, sir.
You deserve it, you have been working very hard and very serious here.
I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Good night, sir.
Next item, Madam Clerk.
Item H, report and recommendation by the Office of the City Manager in reference to Look Advertising LLC letter dated June 24th, 2021 requesting a reduction in the monthly revenue to the City by City Manager. And Madam Mayor, for your information, I sent, uh, Mr. Allen, uh, the agenda, he responded, uh, so I thought he was gonna be here.
Okay, thank you for that, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In your packet, you will find a copy of the June 24th letter in which he advises that he wishes to, the city to consider a reduction in the monthly fee that they pay to the city. Um, obviously, uh, there seems to be some financial issues that the company is, is faced. This is not new. They've, uh, they've been before us to ask for reductions of, of the fees that they pay to the city on several locations in 2017, and I think in 2019, again, they came back for another reduction. And I do know that, uh, Mr. Penna would like to offer his recommendation on this because his office works very closely with the gentleman from, uh, Look Advertisement LLC.
Thank you, Mr. Penna.
Madam Mayor, um, Look Advertisement LLC provides the, uh, waste cans on the perimeter of the city, and above those waste cans, there is a, a sign that they advertise on. Uh, whether his advertising business is going great or not, I have no, no say in that. I know that he provides us a service of collecting the, the waste every week, and, uh, he provides the containers. Um, whether we want to reduce the fee or we don't want to reduce the fee, it really doesn't matter to me, it's just that he does provide a good service there. We never have complaints of any garbage areas in the perimeter of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Penna. Do we have any questions?
Uh, it should be noted, and it was brought to my attention by Mr. Villalobos, that we really do not have a contract, that his contract has expired. So, um, it, it's up to the Commission with whichever way you wish to go. You've heard from Mr. Penna and the service that, uh, that his company provides to the city. And, um, all I can tell you is, I mean, we could go into asking for his financial records and doing an audit of his company to see how well they are performing, and then have a, a better picture of what we should be doing and what we should not be recommending. I don't know which way this commission would like to go.
I have a comment, Mayor. I know they have been picking up all the trash around the perimeter commercial, and I tell you, this is a hard job, to pick up the trash from those bins, it's, it's hard. And you see, all of us seen them in 10 o'clock PM, sometime weekends, picking up the garbage and it's terrible, it's, it's a very hard work. And apparently with the COVID and all these things, no advertising, no business, they have been surviving, I don't know how, but they, they have been doing a very good job and hard job.
Just to be, uh, clear, do they pick up garbage that's on the ground, as well as garbage at, the garbage in the, in the cans?
Everything that's around the bin, whether it's in the, in the bin or outside of the bin, they pick all that up.
So, they don't go around our city?
No, no, just the perimeter.
Just the perimeter.
Correct.
The immediate perimeter.
Correct.
Um, shouldn't this contract, I mean, it's, well, they don't have a contract, we're just, it's just holdover now, right? They're just paying, like, I, I, they're basically at will right now, right? I mean, just a holdover, it's not really a contract, just a holdover?
Yes.
Okay. Shouldn't this go out to bid? I mean, it's basically, uh, they're billboards. It's billboard advertising. I mean, I know, I know it's a trash service, I get that, and that's, that's the unique part, but, I mean, they're, they have prime advertising down all of our corridors, and they're big signs. Um, you know, if you were walking down there, it takes up half the sidewalk. Um, should, should, I mean, should that, should this go out to bid? Administration talking to you?
I'm sorry, uh, Vice Mayor, I'm, I'm not, I haven't discussed it with Mr. Villalobos. We brought the request to your attention, uh, this evening because of, of the owner's request, I don't know what direction Mr. Villalobos will counsel us to take.
Well, as a matter of fact, I can make a suggestion right now, and says, pursuant to the contract that they have, they have an option, the city have an option to renew the contract.
Well...
But they don't have, they don't have a contract right now.
Did they know they're no one?
One at a time, and I'm speaking. We were just told they are not under contract.
I understand that, but I think...
So it's not a renewal, it'd be a new contract, correct?
It's up to you.
No, I'm, I'm asking you, if they're not under contract, then there will not be a renewal, it would be new. Yes or no?
Madam Mayor?
No, yes or no? Is it a, would it be a new contract, since they're not under contract? It would not be a renewal, correct?
The contract has expired, and it's up to the, uh, Commission to...
No, Mr. Penn, Mr. Attorney.
I'm sorry, I did not understand what you...
I, I, I know. Am I correct? Did I hear correctly that they are not under contract?
Correct.
So, it will not be a renewal in that case, correct?
Correct.
It would be a new, correct?
A new contract.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Penna?
Mr. Villalobos, I'm not mistaken, the contract has an option for renewal.
It does.
Okay.
But they're not under contract right now.
It, the contract has expired exactly this month, and they have an option to renew. So there is an option for them to renew.
I'm sorry, it, it does expire this month?
Yes.
Then my answer is incorrect, Madam Mayor. If it's expired this month, then it would be up to the Commission to renew, uh, for another three years, the contract.
So it expired, or it hasn't expired?
At, at, I don't know the exact date of expiration, I know it's in this month, but it's very close to it.
2017, give me one second.
I have a question, Mayor.
Let's, let's get an answer before we proceed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Let's, let's, let's know where we stand before we go forward. Madam Manager, does anyone know when this contract expires, or if it's expired?
I'm looking at the term of the contract right now, Madam Mayor. The initial term of the contract was for three years, the period commencing year one on October 1st, 2016. The agreement may be renewed for one additional term of three years. So from 2019, 2020, October 1st, 2016, so we are actually probably at the tail end of the contract.
Correct.
Which coincides with the, um...
Budget year.
With the budget year.
Hold on, say that again, when did the contract start?
October 1st, 2016.
For how many years?
2016, for three years.
Okay, so at least it's 2019. So, so what was the provision then? Three years extension?
And then, year, period commencing the year one, okay. The agreement may be renewed for one additional term of three years.
Back in 2019.
In 2019.
So if, if 2019 had been picked up, which it wasn't touched, it would have been ending in 2022.
Correct.
Twenty twenty.
But if it wasn't touched in 2019, it's been expired for two years.
That's what I mean.
The first term was expired.
It was picked up, it was picked up in 20, uh, 2019.
Okay, I'm, I'm, maybe I'm wrong.
But in 2019, in 2019, and I believe I emailed you all the contracts.
And it came before...
In 2019, the, the gentleman...
Sixteen nineteen.
One at a time, one at a time. Okay, got it.
Let me just, let me just think through it.
No, no!
You don't know?
Let the manager finish talking, then you can talk.
You don't know how to?
I, I'm trying to add here...
Let the manager finish talking, and then we can talk. Madam Manager, are you done?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, in 2019, they came back to us, asking us to reduce, to help them reduce their expenses, and you all authorized a renegotiated contract. Uh, I don't have that contract in front of me, but it's in the email, I don't know if the clerk, because I, I forwarded it to you, Anetti, you may have it in your, in your computer. In 2019, the...
Three?
I, I don't have it in front of me, I have the 2017. But I know that in 2019, they were here to renegotiate the fees, so that they can lower the payment to the city, because at that time, they were already having problems with, uh, making payment to the city.
Correct.
Okay, I'm gonna make a suggestion, I'm gonna make a suggestion, and it's up to you all to, 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 to go with it or not. We're gonna defer this to the next meeting, and you guys are gonna come back to us with complete information. Please stop bringing stuff to us that we don't have complete information. I mean, knowing when this contract expired or didn't expire plays a lot into, into what we need to know to make a decision. So please, come, when you bring us something, be sure we have the whole story, so we can make an informed vote.
This is what I, what I...
I know the Vice Mayor wanted to speak, and I know Commissioner Blanes wants to speak.
And I want to speak after him.
And you want to speak, okay, so, Vice Mayor, Commissioner Blanes, Commissioner Suarez.
My, my questions are, have, have to do with terms of the contract, but, but, again, that's...
But we don't have answers.
I, I agree, so, I, I'm, I don't have any questions right now, I'll wait till...
Thank you. Commissioner Blanes?
I agree with the Mayor. You're bringing something to us that is totally capricious, and there's no really good reason given. You're asking us to, to renew a contract and, you know, 50% less than what the city is, was getting. I mean, think about that.
Right.
I mean, think, that's kind, to me, that's kind of crazy. You're asking us to reduce payment to the city by 50%, and we don't know why?
Because they can't make a payment.
But, well, who, you just said it.
They're having financial difficulty.
Where are the facts? Where is, where's the data? Why isn't he?
Well, the facts are...
Why isn't he here, you know, advocating for it? Why are you?
I'm not advocating for it.
Okay, so then, so then, so then that's it.
I'm not.
He, he needs to be here.
I even...
He needs to bring him here.
I even stated that we could possibly conduct an audit, and I think that would be a very good way to go.
Well, I think...
Let's look at his financial statements.
I think that you need to do that before you come here to us and say, reduce payment to the city by 50%.
Okay.
What do we base that on?
Thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Madam Manager. Commissioner Suarez, go ahead.
All right, now, to me, this looks clear, what Yolanda said. In the 16, they came, and for, the contract, three years, with 16 to 19, with an option for more, another three years. 19 plus 3 is 22.
We didn't do anything in 19, sir.
That's, that's what the manager said.
We didn't do anything in 19.
They adjusted the payment, but they didn't adjust the terms, from what I'm hearing, that the years of terms.
That's, that's the big question, so without knowing that, how can we vote?
Well, they, they came...
So, all, all in favor, thank you, Commissioner, all in favor of deferring this to the next item, to the next, um, meeting, to be supplied with complete information, to make an informed vote? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? No.
Madam Mayor, may I, may I ask something? In order to ask for his financial statements, and I think that would be a very professional way to go at this, uh, is to, to get at least the last two, uh, financial statements.
I don't see what that has to do with it, Madam Manager.
Well, he's got to prove hardship. I mean, if he's asking for us to reduce his revenue...
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I mean, this is my opinion on this, and I, I understand where you're, where you're coming up. To be honest with you, um, I don't, I don't see a reason why you have to investigate his, his financials. Either he knows he can pay or he cannot pay, and if he's hiding financials from us to try to guess to lower the amount, then we shouldn't be doing business with him. Um, if he, if he's not making payments because he says he can't pay, and we get, get his financials and he's, and we see that he's making a fortune, and he's just not paying us, then we should not be doing business with him. I'm not saying that's what's happening, he's probably a very honest man, and he's, and he just can't make the payments, but I don't, I don't see why the city has to be auditing his financials to have an agreement.
Mayor, I need to speak after him.
When he's done, you may. But we've already, we've already vote, let me, let me be clear, before I let you speak. We have already voted to defer this item into the next meeting.
Yes, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to make a clarification, what about? According with the letter that the manager said that they sent, is because, Mr. Vice Mayor Diaz-Padron, because the business they don't sell in the advertising, because people with the COVID, in the last two years, they don't sell in advertising. They used to sell to Fay, the school, few things here, that's what they said, that's the reason. You don't know, that's the, the letter they sent to the administration.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that's not happening.
No, but I tell you, that's the reason they sent a letter to the administration.
What, what I'm saying is that I don't not believe them, I'm saying we don't need to audit them.
You should know like me.
I, I, I'm saying we should not audit them, I don't think why we should be looking through their financial records at all.
No, we're not talking about their finance, I'm talking about the letter he's, they sent here.
Where's that letter? Is that letter in?
Okay, listen, I'm not gonna let this discussion go on the rest of the night, because we've already deferred this item.
All right, next.
So, next item, Madam Clerk.
Keep going.
Yes, item I is deferred. Item eleven J is a report by the Office of the City Clerk in reference to the vitabulation results of the Cooper Park Playground Shade Canopy and Installation. And for that, I have to report that on July twenty-third, twenty twenty-one at two PM, the bid for the Cooper Park Playground Shade Canopy and Installation project was publicly opened, and one bid was received by Miracle Recreation Equipment Company in the amount of fifty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars. That concludes my report.
This is the second or third time this item goes out to bid, Mr. Penna? Second time?
No, this is the second time we brought it to the City Commission, but it only went out to bid once.
Okay, thank you.
The first time that we brought it here was under a piggyback situation from the Miami-Dade County contract. However, uh, the commission decided that we should go out for bid, and, uh, it happens to be that the only company that bids us is the same one that's under the Miami-Dade County contract. This is a shade structure to cover the area of the swings, the spinner that's there, and the top swings. In the circle, which is the only area that's with the sand, uh...
So it's gonna cover the entire sand area?
That's correct.
Okay.
Do we have, I'm sorry, did you have more?
I'm sorry?
Did you have more?
Uh, basically, that these are the same prices that are in the Dade County bid. They just answered our request for...
Do we have a recommendation from management?
We do. We have a recommendation that you approve the, um, the bid, uh, presented to you this evening in the amount of fifty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars. And this is in the budget, in the twenty, 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 twenty-one budget, account number five-seven-five-six-hundred. And this is impact fee money, that's being used so that we can complete the shade structures over a hundred percent of the playgrounds at Cooper Park.
Well, not a hundred percent of the playgrounds, just going over the sand area.
Over the sand area, but this means that all the structures will have shade with the completion of this one.
Yes, okay.
All the playground structures, yes.
Because the other playgrounds have their own shade.
Yes, they do. They do, and they're in good shape.
Correct. Mr. Penna, just for, just for my, my own knowledge, how long have we been waiting for this? You and I talked about this so many years ago.
About two years.
Two years.
Finally happening. This is great.
And just so you're aware, because of the delay in the bidding process, we now will maybe see it in January. That's how much backlog there is of playground equipment.
Oh, okay. Well, it's here, all right, so...
Better late than never.
Better late than ever, at least now I have to wait for the installation, but I'm just so happy to finally see this coming to fruition. All right, any questions? Madam Clerk, if you can read the, did we read the resolution? No, right?
No.
Could you read the resolution, please?
Item eleven K, a resolution of the Mayoral City Commission of the City of West Miami approving or disapproving the recommendation of the administration to award a contract pursuant to bid twenty-twenty-one zero-seven twenty-three twenty-twenty-one, and authorize the city managers to execute a contract with Miracle Recreation Equipment Company in the total amount of fifty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars for the purchase and installation of certain equipment of the West Miami Cooper Park Playground Shade, to be funded by Parks Account five-seven-five-six-hundred, providing for an effective date.
Do I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Thank you. Call the vote.
Yes, Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Finally, yes.
Four-zero, item passes.
Next item?
Item eleven L, discussion to remand to planning and zoning board for recommendation, repealing live-work units, mechanical parking, and parking bonus credits, adjusting parking requirements, and increasing radius for special use per being noticed by Vice Mayor Diaz-Padrón, phase one. This is a discussion.
Vice Mayor taken away.
So, I would like to, um, ask the Planning and Zoning Board to come back to us with recommendations on, uh, the live-work units, which is something that we spoke about with the residents here, uh, when they all came from the Ninth Street, um, from the Eighth Street building. Uh, the live-work units that allowed the development projects to put more residential units in place of retail. Um, mechanical parking, which has not been used yet, but, um, I think it would, I mean, I would like to hear what the Planning and Zoning Board would recommend now, after we've put some buildings up and time to readjust, what they would think about it today. I, I think, um, I think it should be looked at to be removed as an allowable use, to not even come here, but I would like to hear what the Planning and Zoning Board would say. The parking bonus credits is something that's tucked away in, in the zoning, zoning code. It allows, for example, things like, um, reduction of parking requirements if the building is next to a bus stop. Um, for example, that's one of them. Um, it's, it's something that was probably pulled from a code in a more urban area, um, where that matters, where people can take transit as a main means of transportation. It just doesn't fit our city. We don't have available transit like that, uh, where everybody in, in these buildings use cars. It shouldn't reduce the parking requirements. So I would like to, for the Planning and Zoning Board, to review that and provide us a recommendation. Um, the parking requirement, obviously, we know the parking situation on Ninth Street. Um, we know, um, the building on Fifty-seventh, that how much parking is used in the Wells Fargo. Um, uh, we know the parking situation in the Sixth, Seventh area behind all those houses. I think that the Planning and Zoning Board should give us a recommendation on whether we have to adjust the parking requirements uh, for these, for these buildings, uh, going forward. Um, and then the last one that I would like the Planning and Zoning Board to provide us a recommendation on is increasing the notice radius for new construction in the mixed-use corridor. Um, so just to give you an example, when, and this is something that residents have talked about, um, before, when we've, when the commission has, has, uh, uh, had these projects come, is there'll be somebody in the neighborhood, but not too close, that will come and say, I never knew about these meetings. I never knew, that, why didn't you tell me about these meetings? And, you know, the city will rightfully say, we followed the law, we had a five-hundred radius feet notice around the, the, uh, the project. And, you know, five-hundred radius fees for a project of that magnitude on these mixed-use corridors, um, it, it doesn't, it doesn't capture all the people who are, would be really closely affected by it. Um, so what I'm, what I propose, and what I would like the Planning and Zoning Board to give a recommendation on, is whether to uh, put in, into the zoning code, a fifteen-hundred-feet radius notice for new construction in the mixed-use corridor, um, to go out to residents when one of these special use permits comes for new construction, um, planned development on the mixed-use corridor. Um, as you know, the five-hundred note, note radius feet notice is paid for by the developer. Um, and it would be the same case for the fifteen-hundred-feet radius notice. But I would like to remand it to the Planning and Zoning Board, all these things, so that they can look it over, they can provide us with their expertise and their recommendation, and maybe we can go from there.
Vice Mayor, I have a question. How do you want, do you want all these remanded at the same time? Do you want them done individually, and what, how do you wanna prioritize it? Um, 'cause I mean, that's a lot, so, I, I think the, um, um, administration would need some direction on how you want this to be remanded.
Sure, I, I would, I mean, frankly, uh, I would, I would like to send it all at once and allow the chair of the Planning and Zoning Board to kind of prioritize it themselves, where they can work through it. Um, some of them are kinda related, so I would say, like, the mechanical parking and the bonus credits and the requirements for the parking are all related. I think those get taken as one. Um, and then the live-work units and the radius feet would be taken separately, but I, I, my recommendation would be send it over to Mr. Penna and the Planning and Zoning Board, and let them prioritize how they wanna go through it, using their own expertise and, and, uh, and logic.
Okay, now that I know how you want it done. Are there any questions for the Vice Mayor? Um, he's brought this to the table for discussion. Would, uh, would anyone like to discuss this? Have any questions?
My idea, if he wants to repeal all these things, he should send his recommendation to the Planning and Zoning.
That's what he's asking to do.
They see the Planning and Zoning, what they think, and what they do, and they come back to the commission.
Okay.
That's a regular process.
That's what he's asking to do. All right.
Just to clarify, the repealing of live-work units, that determines the density, right?
Right, so, um, I mean, Mr. Penna can explain it better, I'm sure, but essentially, what, what occurs is, the, in these mixed-use, uh, buildings, these, the ground floor can be used for retail, and what the live-work units allow is for, they can replace that, that floor area of the retail with residential units, which, you know, it, it, it does have due density, it does pack in more residential units, which means more overnight cars. It's just, it's a different, I mean, it's just practically what, you know, what you're looking for in a project. I, I think that it was approved, it was, you know, it was, it was a good, it looked like a good thing. I, I think it's been, you know, but from the developer's side, not from the city's side, been a little mismanaged, and I think going forward, I think we have to adjust. And I, you know, um, and, and I don't, I don't, I won't see it working too well in, in our city because of our, our geographic area. Um, but again, that's for the Planning and Zoning Board to come back with a recommendation.
I don't think it's been used at all.
No, it's, it's, it's been approved in the fifties, in the, as far as I know, Fifty-seventh and Sixty-seventh Buildings have them. But they, as far as I know, no businesses, or maybe one, I don't know of any businesses that run out of them. They're just basically weird residential units with retail doors. So they're, they're apartments, but instead of, instead of being normal apartments, they have, like, retail doors facing out, and people just live in them without any business operating. For a while, there's an insurance agency on the Fifty-seventh, uh, building, but about a year ago or more, they, they left, and there's no more uh, business operating in that building, at least.
Mr. Penna?
Yeah, what's the question?
No, there is no question.
That's accurate.
I thought you had something to say.
No, no.
Oh, no.
In case there's any question.
Any other questions?
So no, that's basically it, right? It, it increases the density, there will be more cars, more traffic, more...
As far as the living unit, yes.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Penna, if you would, um, is it possible to ask that, when you remand this to planning and zoning, can you just keep us updated as to which portion they're working on? And, you know, just let us know, like, okay, they're gonna work on this first, and then, you know, then this is next, so we kinda have a timeline in our mind as to how long this will...
Sure.
So we know what's going on, basically.
Sure.
Okay, good. Okay, um...
Thank you, everyone. I don't know if we need a...
No, it's just, it's just a discussion.
So just...
That's it. And Mr. Penna will keep us updated as to what's, you know, what's being, what's in their hands, and just the status of your request. Okay, uh, next item, Madam Clerk?
Item twelve, concerns agenda items non this evening. Item thirteen, good of the order.
Any other good of the order?
I have just one thing, um, it's a request by the administration, for the administration. I verbally asked someone, and I don't know, it was a while back, so I don't even remember who I asked to, if they can give me an update and, and on something, and maybe you can give an update to the whole commission on this. Not an updated report on, because I've heard some reports, if the, any of the, um, any of the buildings in our corridor have registered any short-term rental properties. Um, I've just heard some things, and I just wanna, uh, if, if there is, if they have not, uh, maybe code enforcement should look at it.
Vice Mayor, if I may respond to that, I believe you may have brought it up to our attention and the attention of the police department, and at some point, it was discussed.
At, at some point, I, I just don't, I didn't follow up on it, I don't know.
What occurred was, we found out, I believe through the NRO program, that there were some eviction, there were some short-term rentals on Sixty-seventh Avenue. I believe, uh, code enforcement dealt with that. Marty Garcia, and I believe you were involved as well. Mr. Penna, we advised them that the building had not been licensed for short-term rentals.
Yeah, I, I didn't know that, but that's great, great job. Officer Rivers left, that's really great.
Yes.
But, um, so I'm glad that came out of that, but no, this is, is actually, uh, separate. Um, so if you can just report back...
Sure, I'll give everyone an email.
If any, if any short-term rentals have been registered in any of the buildings.
Yes, yes.
You know, through our, through our short-term rental ordinance.
Right.
Yes, Chief, go right ahead.
Um, in order to respond to that, here's what we were able to find out. What we found out was that people were doing subleasing. So that's where it turns into a short...
Right.
Short-term rental, because they'd subleased it out for two or three months, or whatever the case may be. Most of those parties have been evicted. Now, whether they stopped evictions or not, again, now, I know that's, something's going on with that right now. They started to evict people, then they stopped, and they started again, and now I think they're gonna stop again.
They're gonna, they've already issued an order to stop the evictions.
If you wanna, I'll, I'll get with you guys at a later time.
Sure.
If you can get the information from me, that would be great.
We'll update the information, yes.
Anything else? Good of the order? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Meeting adjourned.